It was a crank, a crank case. They were looking forward to it.
Really?
For a dot.
And they found out.
Yeah.
That was what they were checking on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Dylan.
Yeah.
It's for after the meeting, during the meeting, whenever. It's optional paperwork.
For what?
Homework.
My group dynamics.
Yeah.
Do you want my name on it?
Nope, no names.
The camera's on, Counselor. Is everybody ready?
Chris.
Chris, Mark called and...
Yeah, Mark said he wasn't coming.
Yeah. I haven't heard from Chris, but I've already turned my phone off. I'll check with him later. Okay, I'm gonna put this out of the way. Is everybody ready? Eric, are you all set?
Yes, yes.
I'll call this meeting to order. A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Twyla? Yes, Counselor Garrison.
Harrison.
Counselor Bigford.
Here.
Counselor Pesky.
Here.
Counselor Ward.
Here.
Counselor McTivier.
Here.
We'll mark Counselor Lund as excused and Counselor Renal. The roads were getting pretty slick when we were all on our way here. First item is the council workshop with the council working rules. Thank you. We have the draft that Counselor Garrison has taken point on for us to put together. You've had input from every member of council along the way? Okay, great. Counselor Garrison, do you want to introduce the work that you've done on this for us?
All right, let's see. There weren't a lot of major changes, a lot of little things that involved just cleaning up some of the wording. There were multiple places where certain things were said. And rather than have them in multiple places, I placed them in one specific spot, wherever they felt, you know, deserved to be. I provided for a specific instructions for placing things on the agenda for those that had questions about it. We reworked the order of business a little bit as requested. The biggest change was the movement of the decorum section, considering its importance in the overall conduct of the meeting. I moved it from number seven up to number two. The wording is pretty much the same, but again, there were a lot of repetition as far as things being said. I consolidated it all into one basic paragraph rather than the way it was spread out before between A, B, and C, which said pretty much the same thing every time. Let's see, what else? That was the major thing.
And it looks like the order of business is, has been moved around a little bit?
A little bit. As requested, we moved the section for good news and recognition at the beginning of the meeting and simplified the counselor communication section to just that. Those were the major, major changes there.
So is counsel communications gonna stay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's still there, it's just we moved.
Okay.
Good news and recognition.
Counselor Pesky, I know that was part of the input that you offered. Do you want to tell us a little bit why you wanted that, what you want out of that?
Yeah, I just felt that having good news recognition in the beginning of the meeting would be really important, not only for people in the public, for the council, but for people watching on TV on Friday. Just start off on a positive note. Sometimes we get into some grit for information in the council meetings. I thought if we started off on a positive note, maybe our council meetings might proceed in a more positive manner.
I'm open to, to that addition for different reason. But I think that sometimes the good news and recognition for things that go on in town and business, businesses or individuals or departments in town, I think sometimes when, by the time we get to the end of the meeting, we're a little bit tired and some of us miss some of the things. And I know I've said sometimes, oh, I wish I would have mentioned this. So that's why I felt like that was a good, positive thing to put in our business.
There is one item that I noticed wasn't on here. Is I think we, after appointments, just for counselor communications, we had some sort of new business public hearing. Or not public hearing, but audience participation. I thought that would be really important for anyone in the audience that wants to come up and say, you know, the street needs some support or great job to the fire department responding to the incidents in town lately or whatever it may be, that we do serve the people of the community. And I felt that if we had that open audience participation for two minutes, we control it for two minutes and we have audience participation response, where we can respond to those. I thought it would also help with anything that happens during the meeting. If, if I say something or, or somebody and it's like, wait, what was that? That would then give the people in the public an opportunity to come up and ask that question and we could address it so it wasn't waiting for two weeks or whatever it may be before a citizen gets an answer to a question. So I would like to see that put between J and K, but that's my personal opinion.
Were, were you suggesting that in addition to putting that new, it's new news, or it's new?
New, new business. So say Dawn wants to come up and say something.
Non-agenda business.
Non-agenda, yep, for two minutes. If, say we have three people, six minutes, I don't think it's gonna drag our meetings down that much. And then we can give the opportunity to respond back to them just to clear up the air, because a lot of times stuff gets said and there's not communication of why it was said and questions are asked.
I think that might be all right if we can keep it to two minutes. And it would be something, I was telling Steve that if somebody's mailbox got plowed over five times and he wasn't getting satisfaction, he could come. Or it would be a good one, the dot, to come up and say, you gotta mow the sidewalks. Something like that, that would be a perfect place for that.
I don't think that this is an opportunity for someone to come up and bring something that happened seven years ago, because we can't control that. But I do think it's an opportunity for someone to come up and say something that's happening now or happening in the future. Because ultimately, we as a council now of seven people can't control the past. We can only control what happens now and going forward. And I think that if we add this in there, it's gonna open up that communication dialogue with the citizens, also they go, open up the our relationship with people, because a lot, I get a lot of feedback that our, our meetings aren't open and we were elected to, to represent the people. And it's like, well, don't, don't want to come and just talk to one person. They want to address the council as a whole. But I don't think it's a beat up time either. It's a time that we can work together. I think we should try it. And if it doesn't work in three months, we come back and we change it. But we can only give it an opportunity and do our best to move forward as, as a council. And I think that's gonna be a key for us.
Now, would you add an audience at the end of that? I mean, would you put it so that they can, you can speak back to the matter?
Yeah, so, so I would like to say J, appointments. K, audience participation, new business, two minute time, two minute time. And then K, audience participation response, so we could respond back to it to get those, to get the communication back to the citizen. And I'd like to say L be council communications. And then M be executive session, and then a German. That'd be my recommendation.
I actually might say that you would put it after counselor communications in case they have.
Yep, you could either do that.
Something that relating to that.
Yep, and we say something during that.
You're gonna do it.
Put it right before we adjourn then.
Right before we go to executive session or?
Yep.
Would you want a time limit on it?
I think two minutes.
I can write it up as the same time limit as the other public.
Well, time limit for what?
An overall time limit, I mean, do we want a, a half hours?
Cover under public.
Yeah.
Public comment.
I mean, let's say tonight, we have four people. If we have two, two minutes apiece, I mean, that's only eight. And we do a response, maybe at the last 12 minutes. I don't think it's gonna last, last a half hour. I actually did a lot of research. I researched 11, 11 different council working rules for other communities, not just the Maine, but in other states. Seven of the 11 actually have this setup. They have a new business, audience participation at the end. And they actually limit theirs to 45 minutes. Obviously, those are larger communities that have more people than we do here in Lisbon. I don't think 45 minutes is necessary. But if you wanted to put a time limit, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to that.
Well, if you had a huge crowd here, then it could drag on for a long time.
Exactly. So it might be beneficial.
On the other side, we are limited by the working rules to 9:30. Unless we agree, so.
If that's at the end, then, yeah, so it'd be all right.
Unless we agree to continue on beyond 9:30. So that would sort of mandate it.
Well, no, I think the other thing is too that I, I like the idea, because we have had a lot of, a lot of people, not just in front of council, but I've had people mention it to me outside council meetings. The idea of, you know, I'm not really sure when I can ask a question or I'm not really sure how to go about doing something. That's perfectly normal. And I had been thinking about the same question from a different direction. I know that all of us have been trying to get to council meetings early so that we have at least three or four counselors on hand a half hour before meetings. Today was a little bit of an exception because of the weather. But to get here early and to be more approachable to folks, I know that after one of the hearings that we had this past year, I had a couple of different residents come to me and tell me that they were too nervous to speak even though they had something to say. And I said, that's okay, you can tell any counselor, you can talk to me, you can talk to any counselor. But sometimes I think it's, I don't want to say intimidating so much as it's difficult to do something you haven't done before, even if you know that you have a goal. And we've all been there, there was that first meeting that any of us went to. So I think that, for me, and maybe we could combine things, but for me, I, I thought that rather than get here half an hour early and sit in my chair and talk to the rest of the council about business coming up, I would rather sit in the audience and greet residents and talk, you know, just be more available. It can be, there, this, this little wall right here can be a barrier to communication from, from residents. So I guess that's the direction I came, that's, that was the, I think we had the same question and I came up with a different, a different answer to it. So I'd be willing to try something on a, on a trial basis. I don't know.
As if if we try.
Right, see how it works.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, we can come right back and do this again in two and a half, three months.
Hopefully, that'll be the only thing we have to fix.
Exactly.
Okay. So if everybody's okay with that point, I had some notes. I had some notes to myself about the section on the conduct of meetings. We all know that we are, our meetings are pretty much run by Robert's Rules of Order. There are a few that are a little bit different because our, the way we run our meetings is a little bit different. And we rely on Twyla as our parliamentarian to keep us in line there. But the decorum of the meetings has been an issue that has been brought up to me by, I'm gonna say quite a few more than a handful of people. And I always feel like if one person takes the time to call me or email me or stop me in public and, and tell me how they feel about something, then there are a lot of other people who either felt or thought similarly. And the concern is the lack of decorum at our meetings. So I think this more specific and definitive language is something that not only we'll keep in mind more, but we've all discussed the importance of most of it is language that was already in our working rules. There is one section that I took particular notice of. I did the same thing that Dylan did. I went through different cities and states, what their, what were their working rules like? I came across some in Texas, Connecticut. I looked at Bangor and Portland and Bath. And I looked at some in Florida, I looked all over. There is a line under decorum and I'll just read it. Anyone desiring to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the chair shall confine themselves to the question under debate and shall avoid all personal attacks and indecorous language. That's the only sentence I'm gonna read. Everyone has a copy of it and can look it over. This is something that I have personally talked with just about everyone. Did I get to talk with you about that particular line? I think it was before we got to it. I've talked with everyone about the rule, the working rules in, in general. But I, I feel like that, to me, is something that is important, not only later on in the agenda. We're gonna be looking at the employee code of conduct. And we have a code of conduct here that we as counselors require ourselves to follow. And we expect the same of the audience and each of us individually. I know that I as chair am the person who's most responsible. But I encourage council in general to remember that if you see or notice any working rule, especially the rules of decorum that are not being met, that you either bring it up to me immediately as a point of order or that you, you have, you have the opportunity as counselors to do this. It's within your, your realm of responsibility to do that. So I think it's important to us. I don't want to do all the talking, I guess I have. So I, I would like other people's input on this. What do you think, Roger?
Hear me?
Okay. Will you work on it?
I'm probably, I'm probably the biggest violator of it, so.
We can resort to physical violence if you need to.
I don't do that. That hurts.
I'll keep you locked, don't worry.
That was the, the line that I wanted to look at them, you know, most closely. Mr. Eldridge?
No, I'm fine. I think the corrections are good. I think it streamlines things and makes it less cumbersome to do.
Well, one of the major, one of the major lines that I saw in here like five or six times was the one, if the chair fails to act, any member may move to require the chair to enforce a rule from the board, vote of the majority of the town, shall require the chair to act. That and other things were, were listed like at least three times, three different places. Well, there were also different references to how someone at the podium was to interact with either the council or with the town. And again, I combined those all into one spot, one place. If it deals with the council, they address the council, which through the chair. And if they needed to address something, town business goes via the chair to the town manager. And there's no question, it's only in there once, so it's not gonna be confusing.
Twyla's parliamentarian, can we have your advice on if we wanted to go ahead and adopt these rules? What's the process? Because it's, it's just rules of procedure and I don't need to use the word just.
Right, did you want to make, when it comes time to make your motion in the middle of the meeting, you could make your motion to move to approve the working rules as presented? And with the amendment that Dylan?
With the changes, okay.
With the change that Dylan asked. However you make your motion would be appropriate then.
Okay, so when we get to that point, we'll make sure that we do that.
Chris, you look lost.
No.
No, we chatted yesterday.
Yeah, we chatted yesterday, I came in yesterday.
I got a new baby and I was, I was looking at the clock and I was, and I was still rocking, come on.
Priorities.
Yeah, I was there yesterday and I, I know what she's talking about.
I think, I think we'll go ahead and, and close this workshop. I have one final thing that I wanted to say because I, well, it's been eaten away at me. So I, I just need to say that for me, I completely respect every counselor who's been on this council before and with me. I respect their points of view, I respect how hard they work. Whether they think they're gonna work hard beforehand, they all end up working hard when they get here. And I think that they deserve that respect. And whether I agree with certain ways that they've gone about doing things or whether I agree with how they did it or not, I still respect them and they deserve that respect. I'm specifically, because a former counselor was mentioned at, at our last meeting in a negative way, I'm gonna specifically address Counselor Pomelo. I met with her individually at times and worked with her on this council and had a lot, had a lot of respect for her then and have a lot of respect for her now for that hard work. She was maligned while she was on the council and her integrity was impugned multiple times afterwards. And I would like to just make sure that everybody knows that I won't stand for that. I don't expect to hear any of that language from this point forward. It simply will not be tolerated. Counselor Garrison, thank you. I think from all of us for all this hard work. You took the framework that former counselors put together for us and took the spirit of what they intended and just helped us to make it clearer. And that was a lot of hard work and I appreciate it.
I do have one other thing. I was approached early today concerning our workshops. And I would like to make one amendment to Section H and at least add in some sort of an allowance for public comment at the end of a workshop if it's warranted by the chair or whoever's chairing it.
I would say that, don't we have that in there?
Um, no, it just simply says that they normally won't be participating in the workshop.
I don't see a problem with adding, at leave 10 minutes at the end, question and answers. I don't see a problem with that. That what you're talking about?
Yes.
I think questions and answers, I'm okay with that. I'm gonna say with the same, with the same three-month trial period. Because it needs to, in my view, it's just my view, but in my view, it needs to be questions and answers about the workshop.
Exactly.
And, and not opinion or or anything else.
Yep.
Thank you for the try.
No problem, I can, I'll write that up the same way with that, that parameter. I'll send those amendments once we get through it. And I'll send those amendments to you and Dylan and let you guys look it over.
Okay, so.
Drive covered everything. And we can send it on to Twyla.
I'm sorry, we'll have a final copy before the next meeting, so that's great. Okay. The other thing that I thought of is our brief, I don't have a copy of that version, but the copy of the town council meeting rules, that's just sort of a brief version of that. We'll need to make sure that we, that that's in line with those council rules. Did you want to take care of that or would you like?
I can, it's not a problem. It's just a condensed version of what we have in front of us.
Right. That would be great. That way we can start our next meeting with the new meeting rules, ready to go.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for all your work. Everyone, I'm really excited because everybody had really great input on this. All right, Twyla, we're ready to move on to the next item.
Okay, the workshop is closed and the next item would be the public hearing, Finance Committee Ordinance Amendment.
Can I use your pen? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone to speak on the Finance Committee Ordinance Amendment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for the Finance Committee Ordinance Amendment. The next item, Twyla?
Is the renewal special entertainment permit for Coombs Mountford, American Legion, post 158, another public hearing?
I'll open the public hearing for the renewal of the special entertainment permit for Coombs Mountford. Snow helps. Helps slow down people. Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing for the renewal for special entertainment permit, Coombs Mountford. And the next item, Twyla?
Public hearing for the renewal special entertainment for the Slovak Catholic Association.
I'll open that hearing. We'll close the public hearing for the renewal special entertainment permit for the Slovak Catholic Association. And the next item.
The last public hearing is for a victual's license for Steve Gobel doing business as McDonald's.
Public hearing is open for the victual's license for Steve Gobel doing business as McDonald's. No one? Okay, I'll close that public hearing for the victual's license for Steve Gobel doing business as McDonald's. And the next item.
Is audience participation. At this time, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward to address items or issues that are on the agenda for this meeting. Please use the microphone at the lectern, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, Ken Wells of Lisbon Falls. I'd like some clarification. On an email I got a while back, it said you guys weren't gonna be putting the agenda out anymore. But then I got an email that's had an agenda attached to it. And I liked your version, the last one, because it had the links on it that I could click on it to see what everything was. So on, on the, on the ones where you weren't gonna do it, your website had all the links attached to it. I went to the website today and it had no links attached to any the items that were on there. So I, I would like just some clarification. Are you going to be doing it or not doing it?
We got a lot of, we've got a lot of flack from people who didn't like the fact that we weren't sending it out anymore and just, so since we sent it to the council, we figured we just will click it and send it to everybody. It's just one stroke, so we're gonna continue to do that.
Is it possible to still have your website with the link on it?
It should have all been there.
I think the October.
It was there?
Yeah.
It's there, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
The meeting prior didn't have any links because there were no handouts.
So it, it'll still be there.
Oh, okay. Twyla just said that the last meeting, if there was a workshop, there were no handouts for it. And so there were no links for that particular agenda, but this one is.
Okay, well, maybe I missed the links then, but I just wanted clarification on, will it be sent or will it not be sent?
It will be sent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For the record, I had the same problem with the workshop one. I was like, fuck 'em, nothing works.
Will there be an opportunity to speak on the individual item, the resolution that's before, that's on the agenda? Will there be an opportunity to speak at that time or?
I don't think that's going to be possible, but if you have something. I don't think that's, uh, going to be possible, but if you have something you'd like to say now, now would be the time.
Okay. Um, the Trails Commission has had this as its, uh, one of its focal points for 20 years. And so, uh, we fully support the, uh, the idea behind the resolution. We think it's a tremendous, uh, move forward, uh, to support this. And we want to lend our support to the, the resolution. I would state, however, that there are things about the resolution that are not as strong as they could be. And the, the primary thing being that there's no reference to public participation, uh, public support. And that's what we've been doing for the last 20 years. And, and acknowledgement of that would have made, uh, some, uh, much stronger, uh, position to this. And, and so if, if you could, I'm not sure who drafted this and, and what, uh, the impetus was behind it, but, uh, involving the Trails Commission in something like this would really strengthen your position. Uh, we could provide some good input that would have, uh, referenced things like the, um, processes that are important to the public, um, uh, forum, like the 196 study. We brought that up and that was included in the, the discussion. It's, it's in the comprehensive plan. We would have made sure that that was referenced in here. So there are a number of things that could have made this stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please, I'm sorry, Mr. Warren? Um, can you just state your name and address because we didn't do that?
Steve Warren, Lisbon Falls.
Thank you.
Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. Since the council changed the council working rules denying the people the right to participate on agenda items, once the sponsor explained the change and the counselors discussed their concerns, the atmosphere in the council chambers has been us versus them. Restricting the people's right to participate in local government resulted in a dramatic increase in Freedom of Access Act requests and the creation of two major blog sites. Once the people were denied the right to participate in the discussion of agenda items, their desire for transparency grew. What is the town hiding? The lack of transparency led to approximately 150-
Mr. Fillmore, are you suggesting that this council is hiding something?
Absolutely not, ma'am.
Then why did you just say that?
I said it was, the people felt that there was no transparency.
Which people?
Well, me for one.
Then please state that.
There are several others who have discussed-
Please don't speak for the people. Please speak for yourself.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, four years add additional time and burden on the town staff. However, four years are the only option the people have to get answers to their questions. Sharing information is what blogs are designed for. And the Lisbon Reporter and the LisbonMaine.net have an ever-growing readership. When the information is received through the foyer program, it is shared on these blogs. The people of Lisbon receive their information on what is going on with the town government from blogs because the Sun Journal and the Times Record will not publish any derogatory information about the town. This is why these blogs are so critical for the citizens of Lisbon. Allowing the people to participate after the sponsor has explained the reason for the change and the counselors have had an opportunity to discuss the issue will reduce four years and will help clarify the need for transparency on the blogs. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Dot Fellows from the Lisbon side of things. I personally think that the, this town, since its change in form of government, has had a tough time dealing with how we are and how we deal with our daily business. It's a hard transition between a town meeting form of government and a council form of government when, when the counselors are the government and the representatives are to listen to their constituents. And then the council is to have their time to deliberate. Unlike a town meeting when every citizen has the right to speak and forever. But I do think you're taking the right steps in allowing the public to speak on a limited basis. But I really got to add something and I, something I learned the hard way is, Lisa, Councilor Ward, don't let everybody talk without going through the chairman. That is probably the most important thing you can to keep control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fellows. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'm Dorothy Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. Several things. Uh, allowing the public to speak more is a really positive change. Um, I've watched several Lewiston and Auburn council meetings and there's dialogue between someone that's speaking up, asking a question or making a comment, dialogue between that person and, and council members. And, um, I just think that's, that's a good positive thing. On the Trails, Rails, uh, Rail to Trail, uh, I printed that out. I don't evidently, and, and this has been talked about for quite a while, having the rails converted to trails. And I'm just wondering what the cost is to the taxpayers. Is there, you know, will there, I'm sure there'll be a cost as, as this comes up, as, as it's implemented or whatever. Is there? I'll have to wait for a response.
Dot, I think that'll be addressed.
Okay. Um, I thought there was something else that I was going to, okay. Decorum, I don't know if this is part of Decorum, but thank you for speaking up so that we can all hear you. I'm not very young. My hearing is not the greatest. And I've sat there many, many times and wondering what you all are talking about. So thank you so far for speaking up. Thank you.
Anyone else? The next item?
Audience participation response.
I'll start with that because, um, in discussing, um, audience participation and audience participation response as, uh, an important part of our, uh, agendas and looking at it while we were working on the working rules. I have assured the rest of the council that, um, I'm committed to, if I don't have an answer, at least responding. Um, I hear what you're saying or, uh, I need more information or, uh, please direct a, a more clear question to a member of the council. So I'm committed to responding. So that being said, uh, if I miss one, I'm hoping that it's because I expect it to be answered, uh, through the agenda. Mr. Warren, um, talked about the Trails, uh, Commission's support of the Rails to Trails, um, project. And, um, Counselor Bickford has worked very hard on that and, um, really been one of the driving forces in our, um, moving this forward. We'll take a look at that, uh, Mr. Warren, when we get to that point on the agenda. I think Mr. Wells, uh, where are you? Oh, there you are. I think that, uh, if we haven't answered your question completely, my fir-, my first feeling about the emails not, uh, coming and then not coming with the agenda, that, that was because some people, uh, wanted them and some people didn't, as Mr. Eldridge pointed out. And, um, so we're just trying to find the happy medium. So if you ever can't find something, just let his office know and-
We'll find it.
We'll make sure that it gets there. Mr. Fillmore, uh, referenced the, um, quite a few, uh, different ideas that grew out of the past. And I'm simply going to state that I think that Counselor Pesky, um, put it in a nutshell for us when he said that we can't change the past, um, but we can help make the future. And that's exactly what we intend to do. We don't intend to, um, uh, make any excuses for the past. We think that a lot of hard work has been done and we appreciate that from every direction. And, um, we can only make changes for the future, as he said. Mr. Fellows, I appreciate your input. Thank you, as always. And, um, uh, again, Dot, I'm, I'm sure that we'll, uh, get to some more meat of the matter on the Rails to Trails information when we get to that point on our agenda. I think I got everything. Okay. All right, next item.
Here's the consent agenda. Any counselor wishing to have any item removed may do so now. Item removed, items removed will be considered next, seeing none. Order 2013-183 to approve the minutes of December 3, December 10. Special entertainment and liquor licenses for the Coombs Mountford American Legion Post 158 and the special entertainment and liquor license for the Slovak Catholic Association and a new vituums license for Steve Gobel doing business as McDonald's.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Order passed, six zero.
Next item?
Under council orders, ordinances and resolutions, order 2013-184, the backhoe repair.
Ryan, uh, Leighton Public Works Director will address this. This is something that we brought up in our last, uh, just before our orientation. I'll let Ryan take it from there.
Uh, good evening. We did, uh, discuss it briefly at the last workshop. The backhoe that we have, um, has a crack in the boom. And the only way to repair that is to actually replace the boom. It's not something that we can just weld and, uh, patch. I floated the idea at the council meeting, um, that we've, we've been, we've been talking for a while now about trying to get an excavator in town to be used by the Public Works Department, to, um, with our ditching as long as with our other projects and to be able to assist some of the other departments in town, um, with some of their projects. The sewer department budget included some funding to purchase, uh, used skid steer or backhoe or something of that, that nature to help with our process at the treatment plant now that we have the, the new sewer cleaning truck, uh, some of that, um, the efforts that, that'll, that'll take place with that truck will require handling of material in a way that we haven't had to do in the past. So what, kind of in the, my memo to you, my initial idea was, was to look at the sewer department, financing the repairs to the backhoe this year, um, with the money that we had slated to, to purchase something. And then, uh, and follow up in the following year with the, um, oh, right, purchase from the Public Works Department, the backhoe. With that money, uh, the purchase price being utilized towards, um, a lease payment of some sort for, um, Public Works. Kind of spelled out the numbers a little bit and, and talked to Jessica a little bit today about, um, maybe a cleaner way to do it is for us to, to make the repairs to the Public Works Department budget this year, um, see how the budget plays out. And then kind of regroup, I guess, during the budget process or at the tail end of the process when we know where we're at. The, the risk of, that we're going to, well, it's not a risk, it's a reality, more than likely. We have only about $30,000 in the, in the budget line that we would normally use to buy, you know, parts, repair parts. And with 15 of it being eaten up with this, it's going to leave us kind of short for the rest of the year. And depending on how the rest of the year goes and, and, um, we may be looking at running some red at the end of the fiscal year. Um, it's just a little too early to tell. We already know we've got another truck that we just sent down the road, um, that's out of commission at this point with a motor, motor issue. Um, and that's being, going to be investigated the next, next week or so. So we're here because we need to fix the backhoe. It's about $15,000 and I need some direction.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. Ryan, um, could you help me understand the numbers a little bit more?
Yep.
So when I look at your memo you have here, the used boom I installed is $10,268.39.
Yep.
When I look at the bid, I think I read it as $10,816. Am I, am I reading this right?
Uh, I don't know if, I can't, I can't remember if I put the note on there before or after I made the copy. But there's, I'd circled two items. There's, um, see the, the, the bid that they provided included a remanufactured, uh, gauge cluster, because that's an issue, I guess, that we've had for a while. So we were looking at, when we had the, when we had the unit down there, we were going to have to do the boom as well as that. I backed that out of, um, out of that number. It was $498.38 for the gauge cluster and $50 for the core. It's the second to last two items listed out.
So it's, uh, second to last one, $50. And what was the other item?
The one rated about $498.
Okay.
I took those two numbers out of the, out of the total to come up with the amount on the, on my memo. To try to get it, just boom-related items.
So it must be the same with the new boom. That must be why there's a price difference.
Yeah, they actually, and I don't know why you did it that way, but on the new boom, you included the price of a new gauge cluster instead of a remanufactured one.
So, right, that answers that question. Um, and then do we only go out to one company for bid?
Uh, we went directly to the manufacturer that we purchased the, the backhoe from to begin with.
Would it be beneficial to us, do you think, to do a little more, um, researching? See if there's anyone else out there that wants the job?
I, I, I don't know if there's many other options locally, to be honest with you. It's a Case, Case backhoe, um, Borgard equipment. They found the used boom for us out in Illinois or Ohio, somewhere out there. So I mean, it's, I mean, they were doing the legwork for us. They're the representative for Case for this area and they were doing that work. I mean, they're, they're the ones that also had talked to Case about them going good for the damage based on the fact that the, I'm going to screw it up. But the, the units, I believe, are 2006. So I mean, it's not, not very old and they've never seen this before.
So is this advertised as a, as a bid, like, uh, are-
This is not put out as, through the bid process, uh, per the purchasing, purchasing policy. This was, we went sole source to the only person that we've, we've dealt with, with anything to do with the case. And by all means, if that's the direction that we need to go, we'll put it out to bid.
Is there any rush, is there any rush to do it, to approve this tonight?
Uh, the thing's been broken for a month or so. We've had to use a backhoe. We've had to rent, we've had to hire someone to come in. Um, we had some flooding issues. I, I really don't know. I mean, we can go through the exercise. I'm not sure we're going to get much.
I just would like to, my personal, my personal opinion is make sure we go through that proper channel. Just make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, if that means that we have to go through the, through the charter. That's my own personal recommendation. That's what it does state, uh, if I interpret it correctly. I think this is really nice that they did this legwork for you. But I would like to see us go out to bid, uh, to see what else we can get, if there's no rush in getting this fixed right away.
I'm pretty sure the council has the authority to-
We do, yeah.
Sole source as well.
And we do that quite often when we have an item like this. And we do it with, um, the, um, PD, when we were buying our dispatch equipment, it's a sole source. Only one company sells it. Um, it's not unusual to do it this way. Lisa, can I say?
Yes, please.
Uh, I got a, I'm talking to Dylan. I got a feeling whether this is Case, if you had a Ford and you went to the three Ford garages to buy a part, it's going to be the same price. So if we put it out to bid, uh, 15 Case garages, there might be $10 difference in price. If that, you know, because it's a Case item. It's not, it's not-
Oh, I understand that, but it's, it's, um, if it's been broke since you said October, I think.
Uh, yeah.
October, November. I mean, I don't know why there would be a rush. We have to do it right away. Who knows? Maybe something come in over. We, we don't know, but I would just like to explore it a little more.
Steve, you said that sometimes we, um-
We sole source.
Choose the option of sole source.
Yeah, because it's generally, um, when we're, especially with something that we're dealing with that's like this Case or, or any other equipment, that you only have one really dealer in the state of Maine. It's someone that we use on a regular basis. Uh, for anything that does with Case, we buy parts from Case when we need parts for hydraulics or anything. So, um, in this particular case, no pun intended, it would make sense to, to stay with our, the source that we've been working with for a long time. And then, as Roger said, it's, it's, it's new. It's going to, the, the cost is going to be the same manner way to go. And then, as Roger said, it's, it's, it's new. It's gonna, the, the cost is gonna be the same amount away to go.
Yeah, I got a question. Now, this is a used part, the used backhoe. Is there a warranty? Do you get a warranty with this?
My recommendation is not to go with the used item. My recommendation is to go with the new item. So I mean, I could, I mean, a used item is a used item.
Right. Well, I wasn't sure which one was going on.
I don't know what happened to the rest of the machine.
Can I just clarify something for myself?
Yep.
The, the, the entire piece of equipment that we're talking about has a broken boom. How old is that piece of equipment?
I believe it's a 2006. I knew I should have brought that.
So it's, so it's out of warranty?
Yes.
So we know that. Is there, I, I'm, I understand what Counselor Pesky and Counselor Bickford have explained about sole sourcing and, and Mr. Eldridge agrees that we do that when there's a need for it. But Ryan, could you, would you be able to at least just explore that for, for us to see if there's not, you know, one other person? I personally would rather go with the company that, that has done all that footwork for us and
We buy parts from them.
Right. And we normally do buy parts from them, but I, I think that just to cover all the bases, we might feel better if we were to look at stuff. At options.
Your direction is.
If you could, if you could, to me, can you find
What I don't know, what I don't know is if anybody's able to sell any Case parts in Maine other than Borgard. I mean, that's what I don't have an answer to.
Okay, so maybe if you could just find that answer for us, that would be, I think that, that would satisfy my curiosity. And, and we could go from there.
They may be the New England supplier to be.
Right, right.
Based on their letterhead with offices in Vermont, New York, New Hampshire, Maine.
We might have already landed on the best possible source. Right, okay.
Exhaust that avenue, if that's what you would like.
If you could look into that and, and ju, rather than looking for new bids, just make sure that we've covered that base for us. And I'd be happy with that.
Me too.
Well, I'm, at this point, I'm not gonna bother coming back without going out to, I mean, I'll go through the process because it's just, it'll, at this point, it's, it's worth it to do it anyway, since if we're not gonna do anything tonight, I'll just start the process tomorrow.
Okay.
If we're done with it the next time, I have to come back here.
Get the ball rolling.
Not a problem.
Sounds good. Counsel, all set? All right. Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next item, Twyla?
Is Ordinance 2013-185, Finance Committee Ordinance Amendment. This is its second reading and a roll call vote is required.
Again, the only change in this is we've deleted the two alternate positions and we've added the two, those two positions will be full, full-time membership with voting rights as requested by the Finance Committee. So that's the only amendment that you're seeing here.
Do we need to have discussion? This is the second reading.
You need a motion? We need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now you can discuss.
Now we can discuss. Thank you. Any discussion?
I think this is a great move for the Finance Committee to be a very useful tool during our, our budget process. I think it's gonna be helpful, not only for this year, but every year going forward. And I would recommend the council to, uh, vote this to go forward.
Anyone else? Are we ready to vote?
Okay. Counsel Garrison?
Yes.
Counselor Mativier?
Yes.
Counselor Bernal?
Yes.
Counselor Bickford?
Yes.
Counsel Ward?
Yes.
And Counselor Pesky?
Yes.
Six yeses, zero nays. Ordinance passed.
The next item, Twyla?
Resolution 2013-186, the regional rail to trail.
This is something that Roger and I have been working on. Roger's spending a tremendous amount of time in, uh, working with our local legislators to bring something forward. All the legislators' recommendations were to put something in writing, such as this resolution. The towns involved, Lewiston and Auburn, have all had input into this resolution. They have all approved this resolution. They'll be going before their councils to support this as well. And take it to our legislators to get action so they can work with the governor, Maine DOT, Department of Conservation to, to make this happen. This has been the fastest track I've seen on the rail to trail anywhere. So my recommendation is to support this resolution and we can move it forward to our, our local officials. Rogers?
Well, yeah. I'll make that motion. I'll do it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have discussion? Because I, I, I just want to remind counsel that we had questions about the resolution. I'm satisfied with it as it stands as it's written right now because I think although Mr. Warren brought up the point of public participation and public support as being such an integral part of it, I think that really is an integral part of it and that the very fact that we're asking our legislators to take a look at this and help us move it forward just sort of includes that. That's just how I feel about it. But does anybody else have anything?
I can address probably most of it. One of the reasons why we've been kind of hush-hush is because where it's been, it's state and federal. And now, what we're, Dot, we're not sure. There are some very exciting propositions out there for financing. And it won't cost you a penny. That's all I can say right now. This is still in the preliminary staging. We're gonna, after this is all said and done, there's gonna have to be some old-fashioned hush trading going on. So, uh, that's about all I can say about that. And as far as the people being involved, they will be very shortly down the road. But you have to get the legislative action, get the people together. And it's like any other big thing. You gotta talk about it, get it, get it all together.
I can't see anything like this.
I'm sorry. That's out of order. I'm sorry.
It's costing the taxpayers some time.
Dot, that's out of order. I'm sorry.
But, uh, that's, that's about it. It will be, Steve, I'm gonna tell you, you will be notified. You will be brought into the procedure at the right time. And I've told you this. And the people will be brought in. The more you talk about it, I can't, I can't make it go any faster.
Thank you, Counselor Bickford.
To my knowledge, this is just a simple resolution saying we support it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
No money, no nothing. It's just, we're doing it. Lewiston's doing it.
Auburn.
Auburn's doing it. Just saying, yes, we're all willing to go forward.
Yes. Are we good? All right.
Those in favor?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
And order, resolution passed, six zero.
Thanks for all your hard work, too.
It's a joint effort. Roger's done a lot of legwork.
And the next item, please.
Order 2013-187, Council Working Rules.
And do we have a motion to accept the council working rules as amended during our workshop?
I'm making the motion to accept as they were amended.
I'll second it.
Do we need to read the amendments again? Do we need to say them again?
We can. Do you wanna do that?
Well, I'm just asking for clarity. I don't know.
I, uh, we had two places where we were going to amend. One, in the order of business, where audience response, I'm sorry, the good, I have here. The good news and recognition, communication and a response to that for new business or rather non-agenda items. And then, um, the, right before adjournment, we'll have, is that correct?
Yep. So, um, we'll do J, Council Communications, L, Good News and Recognition. Actually, that is L, Good News Recognition, M, Audience Participation, New Business, Two-Minute Time Limit, N, Audience Participation Response, O, Executive Session, and P, Adjournment.
And there was one other place, Twyla. Did you have that in your notes?
The good news and recognition you were gonna put at the top.
Yes. Okay. Is that, is everybody clear?
If you prefer, we can just do the amendments and vote on it next meeting, if you.
I think it'd be good to get it, get the ball rolling, get it, get it going. And we'll, we'll take a look in about three months. Maybe we could put that on the schedule, Steve.
Yep.
To take a look at it, see how it's working for us, just review it. Okay? All those, are we ready to vote, everyone?
Ready.
Good. All those in favor of accepting the amended working rules for the town council?
Order six zero, passed.
And the next item?
Is the Finance Director's report.
Hello. So before you, you have my finance report for the month of November. To summarize revenues for you, November brought in $256,096. State revenue sharing is 41.1% collected at $234,000 versus last year at $278,000. Last year at this time, we were 41.6% collected, but also on a budget of $820,000. Our four-year average collection rate at this point in the fiscal year is 40.68. So we're actually on a higher collection percentage standpoint, but at a far reduced level of income. And okay, I just said that. Sorry. Excise tax is 42.1% collected with $507,000 year-to-date compared to prior year at $516,000. Our four-year average collection rate at this point is 40.8%. So again, we're slightly above our average collection there. In November, we also received $108,000 in U-RIP revenue, which is a state reimbursement program for the town maintaining Route 196. And that's the majority of what we had for revenues, unless you have questions for me?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
I was just wondering, I know that this is all you do day in and day out. So from your point of view, Jessica, do you notice any trends either in a negative or a positive direction? Are, are we, are we staying on par? Are there, are there any things that we should either be concerned about or that we should be really happy about?
Yep. And part of the reason, like you said, I do, I do perform this day in and day out. But that is why I try to talk about our historical average collection and do it on a percentage basis because that will give you a better picture regardless of the dollar values where we stand from a, a collection standpoint or receipt endpoint of our revenues. And I try to hit that with our biggest revenue sources, be it state revenue sharing and excise tax collection. Outside of the, I think we're on track with those, you know, which is indicative in those collection percentages that we're just slightly above what our four-year average has been. So as far as those are concerned, I, I think we're right on track. My concern that I would express to you as counsel would be to seriously consider the account 4001, which is the use of surplus and the designation of the $250,000 that you currently have earmarked to come out of surplus to help fund the budget. That, that would be the biggest thing. And I, Steve and I have been working hard, honestly, to try over the last, this will be my fourth budget season, to try to reduce that over time. And it has just been obviously increasingly more difficult because we have yet to be able to really do so. But that is one thing I would urge you to seriously consider and contemplate through this budget process. But as far as the other revenues, we, we do, uh, we're fairly strong in our collections with what revenues we do have in place. Every year through the budget process, we look at what we have collected and as department heads, and we really try to review those every year to see if there are changes that do need to be made. And so overall, I think we are right on track. If you go back three years, there's probably a little bit more detailed breakout of the revenue dollars. I think in the past, like, under Public Services with the Rec Department, it used to be just a solid $125,000 that we would budget for revenues. And though there's still $125,000 budgeted, I've been, over time, trying to break it out over the programs so that we can start to track more readily how well those programs are doing. So that's been a work in progress. And Mark and I work every year together to try to make sure that we're accurately reflecting the programs that are working and not as far as that revenue allocation. So the total dollar hasn't changed, but we're trying to make sure that we're earmarking that $125 to the applicable program versus just a flat $125,000 line. So, but all in all, I think every year the department heads and I sit down and do a great job reviewing those revenue levels to make sure that they're still reasonable.
Well, thank you very much for your insight and for your report.
No problem.
Thank you.
Moving on to expenses, the total expenditures for the month of November were $611,575. Of this, our personnel costs equated to $340,000 or 56%. This includes wages and benefits. Contractual services made up 16% at $97,000. This was primarily due to our waste disposal fees of $26,000. Technology fees of 19. Streetlights of $8,000. We had our audit fees of $6,000 and assessing services of $8,000. 12% of the total was related to repairs and maintenance costs, and this was primarily, primarily due to work on town buildings, winter public works and fuel purchases. And that's my report for expenses. There are a few items I would also like to address with you to update you on tax collection. As of November 30th, we have collected 49.2% or 5.1 million of the total tax commitment. Last year, we were 49% collected at this point in the year. So we're on track for where we have been historically with collection at this time. In all reality, we should be over 50% collected as we've gone through half of a year. So we still have accounts that have not paid their taxes, but overall, we're, we're well within our norm for collection. And that's all I have for you, unless you have expense questions for me?
Actually, I had a question, since you bring it up, as far as your receipts. Going back to revenue, for animal control, I noticed that we've broken out Sabatys, Bowden and Durham under separate lines. Is there any reason why Sabatys hasn't paid us?
It's probably just the timing of, of billing.
Okay.
Yep.
And I noticed, uh, now, what, what is the difference between the animal control revenue and the other, the other lines?
Animal control revenue is, is what's brought in from the officer through the course of his duties versus what we receive from the other towns for us providing that shared service with them.
People are taking care of their animals, so we're down, and we've got 10% so far. That basically it. All right, thank you.
I do have a couple of quick questions.
I'm sorry, expense or revenue, just so I.
Expense.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to be.
I think I've asked you both these questions before, but I looked through my notes and I couldn't find what date it was I asked you. Under insurance contractual services, it shows a negative of almost $9,000.
Yep.
How does that work, again?
Well, quarterly, I have to do a journal entry to reclass from our liability to our expense of what we've paid. This is, and, and that is, I can tell you exactly which line it relates to. Bear with me. My fingers would work. My fingers would work. Yeah, it's... Excuse me. This in particular is a refund on our general liability policy. We receive kind of like a dividend back for... For our policy, and that's what this is.
Does that come from the people that contribute to that fund, or...
It comes from our provider.
Okay. But the question is, under retirement, personal services, I noticed that our current... Actually, I have my name as a real question, just by looking at it. That's all I have.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next item, Twyla.
Is the town clerk's presentation.
This is part of a series of the department heads will be coming before you, each one giving a short PowerPoint presentation to just go through what is done in their offices, what they do in terms of, in Twyla's case, document preservation and things like that. So this way, just before the budget process, you'll get a good opportunity to really see what each person does and how they're doing.
Are we having technical difficulties?
Warm up.
Oh. It's warming up.
Don't have any technical difficulties here. Been practicing a while.
It's back there on, turn the rest off a little more.
It should probably be fine. It's white on red, so... As it warms up.
Tom's gonna do his moonlighting lights there. And we can turn the other ones off.
That looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's a Christmas tree, that's ambiance.
Chose the right color for the season, didn't we?
Yes.
Well, we'll begin with letting you know the town clerk's duties include the municipal records manager. And I'm also the Freedom of Access contact person here in the town. We... I'm the public records officer and maintain some records through the vault process and filing at the counter. I'm the agent for inland fisheries and wildlife and animal welfare. I am the vital records registrar for the town and the registrar of voters and the election supervisor, the council secretary, and the board and committee meeting minutes coordinator. Behind the scenes, I'm busy preparing department budgets and determining work schedules that meet the local demands and the state deadlines. I record and transcribe meeting minutes for the council and track legislation that needs to be codified, ordinances and that sort of thing. The policies that the council adopts as well are codified in the back of that book, and it's available online. We, in our department, manage our vault retention schedule and the voter registration program. A little bit more detail would tell you that we maintain a voter list of about 7,500 voters. And that's a picture of the card file system. There's approximately probably 20,000 cards in there. We maintain... Maintain a database on all of the information in the vault now and the oaths that we take on a regular basis every year. We house our vital records, birth, deaths, and marriages, and our business licensing in there. We compile and send monthly state reports to inland fisheries and animal welfare and the vital records office. We administer oaths on both the local and the state level for appointments. We perform research for the council and the town manager and the staff. We keep our vitals and our ordinances and our indexes current on a monthly basis. We post notices from the state or county offices about various public meetings or programs. And we assist residents at the counter with licensing and certified copies. We wanted you to know that entering the data from the voter registration cards is done on a regular basis daily into the central voter registration system, as do all the other towns in the state of Maine. We place barcode labels on the back of each of these cards, and they're scanned, and the cards are now visible to the registrars and the person at the computer, so we can check your signature based on your petitions and that sort of thing. So the scanned cards are then filed in our system, and then later, we pull them out as people move around the state when they're deleted. Yearly, our activities include processing approximately 70 Freedom of Access requests. And we hold or held the school budget validation referendum on June 12, 2012. We held a municipal and presidential election on November 6, 2012. And we have sold... Or we typically sell around 1,000 hunting and fishing licenses yearly. We sell about 700 certified copies of vital records on an annual basis. We collect around 73,000 in our department at the counter. We have processed in the past 12 months 600 new voter cards, 500 changes, 300 cancellations, and updated the voter history for 5,300 files. That includes both the June and the November election, totaling around 6,700 entries alone, just to the database, in elections. Part of our election work also includes certifying the nomination papers, proofing and ordering our ballots, testing the DS-200 tabulator voting machines, printing the voting lists, hiring and training election workers. And we've done a lot of training with the new equipment this year, more than we have in the past. We supervise the polling places and process absentee ballots. You have in your town office the following materials for elections. We have 45 election booths here. We have four DS-200 tabulators, four ballot boxes, 40 transfer cases, four folding tables, two accessible voting systems, and multiple signs. This is a picture of what your vault looks like inside. Because we wanted to let you know that on an annual basis, we move in and out about 60 boxes there. We log them in, and we look up the information in the state's disposition schedule. It tells how long we keep records and how long... Whether they're permanent or they're confidential, that sort of thing. We wanted you to know that we send in annually about three times a year the new ordinances and legislative policies and rules for updating. We have a codification in process right now that should be back in about a couple of weeks. And the public records research that we do, we wanted you to know that we log all our requests into a log sheet. When we get a Freedom of Access request, we forward it to the appropriate staff, and we monitor and gather the information, and we send statements and monitor payments. Our goal in our department has always been keeping our residents informed, because I believe in building a better communication between government and citizens. We've done a very good job at that in the past few years, thanks to Steve's support and the council. We started a new social media Facebook page recently. We post current events. If you haven't, you know, join us and like us on Facebook. We've added a new online vital records request service. And that's working very well for those that may be out of state who want to pay by a credit card and order their records. We continue to offer the online dog licensing program. We register annually about 100 dogs. And we are linked to the state's online absentee ballot request service. So around 60 days prior to any election, you can go online and ask that your ballot be mailed to your house and vote absentee and mail it back. We want to keep on a regular basis the following information current on our website. So you'll find their election information and election results. You'll find information on our roadbook and our updated list of streets. We have available now archived and searchable council meeting minutes. We have board and committee names, expiration dates, and phone numbers to make it easier for the public to reach you, that... To reach those members that are serving on boards if they have questions. We post copies of the minutes to the library board, appeals, and planning board meetings. And available online is our code book of ordinances, rules, regulations, and policies. The vital records program is changing on a more regular basis these days. We're moving towards electronic records. And this year, we've added the ability to electronically issue birth records. We started in August, about August 1st. Forward now, when you're requesting a birth certificate, we go into the computer and print it. Because you have received one today. We also electronically issue death certificates from 2011 forward. And we manually issue marriage licenses, as we have always done, and we file them. And we continue to update our storage binders as funds allow. I wanted to point out in this picture, on the right, you'll see the black binders at the top. I wanted to thank you for the $1,000 that you gave us to store our vital records in. On the left are the notebooks. They were becoming torn, and they were bending. And of course, our records aren't as protected in those types of books, so... They're... They look a lot... A lot better, definitely. Makes it easier to access as well. Simultaneously, we conduct our elections, we handle our customers, we maintain our records management program, we answer the phone, we sell certified copies and licenses, we do our cash-ups on a daily basis, report the election results, set up the polling places, purchase equipment, and codify your... Your ordinances and policies, all with a friendly, happy smile. The town clerk's mission continues to be to strive to efficiently and accurately maintain your town records, to conduct state and local elections in accordance with state and local laws, to issue state and local licenses, birth, death, and marriage certificates together with providing information to the general public, the staff, and local officials. On the horizon, I wanted you to know that our vital records, we call it the DAE program, is planning to store more information into it, and they plan to go back to 1995 with birth information. So that will eliminate filing paper copies in the future, and it makes retrieval and issuing it faster. And the corrections to electronic records is done at the state level, and we don't have to do them locally, but that makes it faster as well. The DS-200 tabulator machines are on site, and we used them in the last election. It makes it easier to process the ballots. It eliminates the voter errors by sending ballots back to the voters to correct before they leave the polling place. It makes it easier to retrieve the ballots for packing them in the storage containers. And at some point, we need to talk about moving into adding a central polling place for Lisbon to process absentees and new voters, which Lisbon is now the... And it always has been the third-largest community in Andersgoggin County. And your other two larger communities also found it very helpful to have a central polling place. So we're now at that stage where we need to consider that to make it easier for the voters. We are moving to one house district for Lisbon, yay. That eliminates having two different ballot styles in one of our polling places. That makes compiling the totals faster and easier. Appreciation and recognition. I just want to thank the council, the town manager, and our support staff for supporting good ideas, because without the funding and the support for these special projects, they could not have been accomplished. And these special projects have all had a positive impact on our community, and the benefits will last well into our future. Your election team is not top-notch, and without them, we cannot serve the voters of Lisbon with the excellent customer service that we do. They're such a dedicated and committed group of volunteers. And I encourage each of you to stop and thank them on Election Day. It's been a pleasure to work for the town and with such a great team. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Twyla.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lights.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Twyla?
Very nice.
Thank you very much, Twyla. I thought that was really eye... Really eye-opening. I'm looking forward to all the departments coming in and presenting, because sometimes we... Or I know, I forget how much work really goes on behind the scenes, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
One question. Twyla, as far as your vault goes, how are you guys doing for space? As far as what are you required to keep in there?
I know. Space is looking like it's starting to get limited. So we are, I think, moving towards the... The more permanent, long-term documents will be probably housed in the vault. And the more short-term things you're getting into within the last two or three years will probably be more housed at the department level. But right now, we haven't had to move to that yet.
Thank you.
It is... Space is a premium.
Thank you, Twyla.
The next item is the employee code of conduct.
I put that in there just so... We will have a workshop on that coming up. We're trying to finish up the personnel policy changes and just bringing them in line with as much of the union contracts as we can. There's a few more things we have to do, but we'll have a workshop on the personnel policy and the employee code of conduct, which is... We all feel is pretty important. So hopefully, all tied together when we sit down and go through that, but...
Do you know about when coming down the pipe?
I'm hoping we'll get to that in January.
All right.
I want to get through this before we start the budget process, which will be in March, so...
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Next item is the town manager's report.
Just a couple of things. I would like to thank Katie Brunel, one of our deputy tax collector and sewer clerk. She was with us for three years and did a tremendous amount of work in realigning that office, and we'll miss her. She's been a great employee, quiet, but productive. And hopefully, you get a chance to stop in and meet Hallie McCrader. She's a Lisbon girl, and we're glad to have her on board. She's got a degree in accounting from USM, and I think she's gonna be a great asset. And I welcome her, and make sure you stop in and say hello. Dennis Douglas will be doing the next presentation in January on our code enforcement and what he's doing there. There's a lot of stuff going on with the Google Earth and some of the GIS mapping. I think when you see what they're doing, it's pretty impressive. So that will be in January. Just something for the public to be aware of, the Lisbon-Durham Bridge. If you haven't seen it, and it hasn't been posted yet, it will be posted by the MDOT. They visited us last week. They're gonna be cutting it back to one large truck on the bridge at one time. I was told that usually you can't get two on there anyway, but I guess they're very concerned about the weight and having more than one vehicle, and they expect that to happen within the next month. And it'll last for three years until they have the new bridge done, which will be started in the spring. So be prepared for that. And I won't cross it many times myself, so stay off it. But... And then it was a quest from the sewer department and the water... From the water department that we share in the cost of new hand meters. For those who don't know, the sewer department... Or the water department goes around and collects their data, and the sewer department uses that and data in doing their billing. So it makes perfect sense that we would share that cost. It's a sole source. It's a proprietary software and equipment. So Shelley had... I gave you each a copy of what they... What they purchased. I guess they've already got it. So if it's okay with the council, we'll just cut them a check for 50% and move on from that. Makes perfect sense to do that, to help them. So... Any questions on that particular item?
Need to vote?
We don't need to vote.
No, you don't need to vote on it, no. Just informational. Today, if you... I think you might have received a letter, email from Roger Terrio on the forfeiture question that Mark Lunt asked. The forfeiture money that Chief Brooks in the police department received was federal funding, and it does not need to have a vote of acceptance from the council, which is different if it's state funding than that we have to bring before you, and you have to vote to accept that funding. But this being federal, that is not necessarily the case. If you want to change that, you have the authority to put that in a policy where you do have to accept it. You can make that rule yourself if it's something that you want to do. But you're looking at a... The Finance Committee has a donations, grants, and policy that they're reviewing. And we can tweak that and bring that onboard if it's part of that, if you'd like, but that's to you. And did you... My question, did you all receive the school budget electronically? I've asked Kathy Mesmer. You had requested that, and you got it all. I hope that's helpful.
Yes.
It was paper, that's for sure. I know Councilor Garrison likes everything electronically, so we'll try to keep that going. I appreciate it. You... Okay. That's all I have, any questions?
Next item, Twyla?
Next item is under appointments. Order 2013, 1888, Finance Committee resignation.
In your packets is a copy of Mr. Fellow's resignation from the Finance Committee. We're very sad to see him... We're very sad to see him leave that committee, but we understand having too much on your plate. And we're happy that you still are such a great input in so many ways for the town, and we'll look forward to seeing you at planning board and council meetings and everything else. I personally didn't respond to your letter until tonight because I just wanted to do it as a council, and I think we have to accept...
You have to vote.
Don Fellow's resignation. Do we have a motion to accept?
I don't want them, but I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? You can't... Thank you.
Order passed five to one.
I think it was reluctant on all our parts. Thank you. And the next item, Twyla.
Order 2013-189, the Finance Committee, one member, term expiring June 30, 2014.
You should have an application in your packets for a request to be appointed to that, Fern LaRicheau, for a one-year term.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I think we're all familiar with Fern and his familiarity with Finance Committee. No? I...
See, we have so many other applicants.
I know. But in addition to that, I know that it's... The formation of the committee itself was something that Fern really put forward as counselor, because he really believed that it would be great for the town. And so I'm really pleased to see the application, and I would love to hear that he is accepted, so.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? I was like, I lost my mental place. All those in favor? Thank you.
All those opposed? It was six zero, right?
Yes.
Order passed?
Thank you. And the next item, Twyla.
Council Communications.
Anybody want to go first?
I'll go. I'd like to tell people that we got a new trash truck, trash trailer. And it was a very... I was impressed with it. I went and checked it out, and this is the first time that I've ever seen a trailer made with pictures sent from the town to make... To do their own stuff to the trailer. And it was really... They get two ladders on each side, which was a... They only put one. They did the rear bumper exactly the way the people at the town transfer station wanted it, and they did it by a picture, and it come out fantastic. I... I think it's going to be a very, very long-lasting trailer, and it's heavy. The rush shouldn't bother it. And I'd like to give thanks to Public Works for keeping the roads plowed. It was a... I think they did a pretty good job for being one of the first big storms. Let's hope everything can stay the way it is for a while. Okay?
Thank you, Roger. Anyone else?
I do have a few things. First off, I just want to thank our public safety for their response to a couple incidents that have happened over the past week between Topsy and Lisbon. Nothing... Hearing news that has happened over the past week is easy to take, but it is one thing that when you know that Lisbon, public safety is on scene, stuff is going to be taken care of from our fire department, our police department. They do a great job, and I just want to thank them for everything they've done. For those of you that don't know, the school committee will be having an informational night tomorrow at 5:30 at LCS, I believe. 5:30 to 7:00.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Thursday, thank you. Thursday. Reading my notes here. And then I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to the council. We all worked really hard on the council working rules. A lot of time and effort has gone onto it, and I think this is a prime example of a council working together. So I'm really excited about this year. I think a lot... A lot of positive stuff is going to happen, and this is just one example of us working together.
Thank you. Well, I have just a couple of small things. One is that, just to reiterate, Councilor Pesky's appreciation for our emergency personnel. And recently, we have had them working very, very hard. Not we, not we. They have been working very hard responding to emergencies in we... In a way that we can be very proud of. They work very hard. Our town, as a town, has suffered some sadness and loss. And I do know that tonight, a vigil was planned at the high school for one of those losses. And our hearts and prayers do go out to those who have lost and are hurting right now. It's important to us as council because we're not... We don't just sit in this seat when these things happen. There are neighbors and our friends and our relatives. We're a small enough town to know somebody who knows somebody or to know that person ourselves. And it really brings it close to home how much we appreciate those emergency responders. I think we've had a solid start to this council's year. I have had positive input from every member, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I... I'm especially grateful to our committees, every one of them, for all the hard work that they do. And several are represented here tonight, and as well as departments. And I think that shows me how dedicated everyone is to everything that we're doing. I really appreciate everything. I had a really great feeling working with the council in the past week and a half, knowing that we had this workshop coming and having such a great energy and such a really wonderful, project-oriented, and forward-moving mindset. So I'm looking forward to the upcoming year. Thank you all for that. I appreciate it.
Do you have one more thing?
Sure.
I think... I don't think we talked about the question and answer period for the workshops when we went over the council working rules, as I'm thinking, as we just sat here.
You did want all of the things discussed in the workshop.
We didn't put that in our amendment when we voted. I don't remember. Did we...
When we were clarifying the motion, but we originally amended it. So you have that in your notes to...
Yeah, you wanted all of the things that you discussed in the workshop in that. I'll list them out a little bit more detail for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay. And the next item, Twyla.
Is Order 2013-177, an executive session per one MRSA, Section 405.6A, personnel matter.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Favor?
We... Thank you.
Order passed six zero.
We won't be voting on anything, so when that's done, we'll... We won't do anything except adjourn. Okay, thank you. Take a five or 10-minute break? Less.
Just because it's...
Yes. Let's make it four minutes. Well, you know why.
Greg, it's our homework.